All this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
Role call, please.
Trustee Pauling.
Uh, excuse the absence.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Crowell.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Uh, here. Uh, moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions, corrections, or substitutions?
I have one addition over old business revenue allocation for ordinance number one fifty.
Are, that being said, are there any other amendments to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented. A motion on the table to approve the amended agendas, their support. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Uh, moving forward in the agendas, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Uh, if there is anybody online that has any comment, please use the bottom S bar to raise your hand or to send a message so that we can address you appropriately. Seeing none, none in person, we'll move forward to payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of bills?
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the table to make payments bills, is there support?
Also.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
So. I, and I think I've asked this before, but just refresh my memory if I did. I keep seeing. Banking fees, general fund in this case, one eighty seven fifty. Why are we having banking fees at that level? Can we tell me that?
Those are from Huntington Bank and they're from all of the accounts at Huntington Bank buying to come out of the general fund. If it's general.
I mean, what are they charging us for? We're not getting over to F fees, I'm sure, so.
Well, they charge us for deposits, or if you do night drops, or if you do.
They charge for a deposit.
Benefit of doing business with the bank.
They ask if we make more than.
Maybe I, now I realize why I don't do business with banks anymore.
Yeah. Not to charge.
I probably shouldn't say that.
Then your manager should be extra firm, right?
No, I'd be, I'm talking about credit unions. Yes, I don't see those fees.
Alright. Are there any other questions or comments of payment of bills? Do you mind role call?
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty two, a regular scheduled meeting. Are there any corrections or substitutions to the minutes as presented? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Awesome.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the minutes as presented of May tenth, twenty twenty two, is there support?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported.
Supported by.
By trustee Reiner. Uh, any further discussion? So, uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes of May tenth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Moving forward to the correspondence from the Planning Commission minutes of May ninth, twenty twenty two. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented.
So who?
We have a motion to receive and file, is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor of receiving and filing the correspondence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Uh, moving forward, we actually have with us a gentleman, Chad Spencer, uh, from up north prevention and Catholic Human Services. If you'd like to take the podium, sir. Uh, give us a little presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Chad Spencer. A lot of familiar faces here. Um, a lot of you probably know I'm, I'm retired police officer. I retired in, uh, July of twenty twenty from the Alpine Police Department. I am working part-time for the Sheriff Department as a ORV, you know, Marine. Four wheeler deputy, special deputy, but, um, I'm also working for Up North Prevention, which is an initiative through Catholic Human Services. And the whole reason I'm here is prevention workers are usually out in the field. Uh, we do a lot of our work out in the community. Um, when COVID hit. Uh, all our agents were basically pulled back in and we've been out of the community now for probably two years. Um, so I just kind of want to go around to the leaders of our community and just kind of get my face known and advise what we do. Up North Prevention has expanded tremendously in the last year. Um, we went from five field agents now to fourteen. So, um, right now I'm doing a lot of my work in the schools, um, the schools with COVID and the kids at home, uh, virtual. Coming back into a structured environment, the schools would be the first one to tell you, we need all the help we can get. And I'm finding a lot of work in there, just, just teaching kids about, right now vaping is the rage amongst young kids. Um, so I'm spending a lot of time in my, in the schools doing, uh, programming or education about vaping or marijuana or old school alcohol use. Um, just then didn't, there's some classes we can give on, uh, you know, making good choices and, and your future's a good, you know, your future is all about, you know, choices you make. Um, we have some esteem classes, peer pressure classes. So, but that, that's what we do. And now the school system, now the school is starting to wind down. Um, we're considered face-to-face employees, which means we are expected to get so much face-to-face hours with the public. Um, so I'm just kind of here, you know, we, the way coming from police work where everything's defined and everything's regimented and everybody knows their roles and knows your expectations and here's what you better read. Prevention is kind of different. I said, when I hired in, I said, what is prevention? Prevention is as needed in the community. So, still trying to get my head wrapped around that, but like four or five years ago, we had that, that synthetic marijuana come into town spice and everything and it was wreaking havoc. Everybody was, you know, um, abusing it and having, that's something we would have went out in the public and educated, hey, it's not what you think it is. It's not safe for you. So, that's kind of, we can, we can put together programs for whatever needs enter our community. Uh, right now I happen to be in school a lot, but if something else comes in, I just wanted you to keep with you, the leaders of our community, I just want to keep, keep, you know, keep us in mind that we have tools to, uh, come out and try and help the community and educate and try and combat whatever evils come into our bubble. So, that's the whole reason I'm here tonight is just to kind of get our face back in the community, say, hey, we're around if you need us. Um, I do have some cards here.
But, um, that's what we do. And I've been at a job for nine months, so I'm still wearing it too. But. Just want to get our face out there.
Can I just ask a question? Um, what about like human trafficking? I mean, is that, how big is that or little is that in our community? And do you, is that something that you would also like educate or prevention?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, we could put together a program and work with law enforcement on something like that, that, that's a pretty heavy topic. I would work in conjunction with law enforcement on that.
Is that something that you currently do or not?
We have not had any requests to get involved in. We would. I mean, we would, you know, and everything we do is, we try our best to have evidence-based material. So we don't just throw something together and, and wean it. We, our stuff is, if it's available, we try and get the stuff that's been tried, tested, and we know is, is, is accurate.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we would, we, like I say, that's, it's hard for me still. I'm still trying to understand it. It's as needed, so we kind of go around and as needed, we, we put together classes and do what we can do. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Spencer?
On your website, it, it doesn't really talk about, looks more like it's for tobacco education, vaping, prescription drugs, coalitions, underage drinking. Uh, I, I assume that Dare still does what Dare tries to do and you are on a different page from them.
Dare, I think, is in a, is in a pause right now from both agencies. It says no, it's no secret. It's manpower and law enforcement is, as with a lot of other places, they just don't have the manpower to run it.
Yeah.
Um, Dare concentrates on fifth graders and that's where it starts and where it ends. A lot of our work is similar to what Dare does. A lot of the lessons are similar, but we, we're geared towards, you know, whatever age group needs our help.
Okay.
So, and that, that website is under, like I say, we've ballooned in the last year, we went, and so that website is currently under, you know, re- reconstruction, so they're going to be updating with pictures and stuff, so. So.
Yeah, anytime you can help the kids, our community, that's, that's what we're here for as well. Any other questions for Mr. Spencer in Up North Prevention?
Well, thank you for allowing me to come here and speak and give a presentation and if you see a need, you know, stall, you know?
Thank you. Okay.
Have a good evening. Uh, moving forward into old business, uh, first item of all business was newsletter. Laura and I kind of chipped away at it, uh, for you as a rough draft, uh, throughout to get on the agenda. I believe that Laura has some notes.
Yeah, I just had a couple of suggestions. Um, just, I mean, one is a just a little, uh, with the websites listed on the first column and the second column, I don't think we need it in both places.
First rule of marketing on websites, talk about your website as many times as possible. That's why.
That's fine. I, I just, I didn't know if it was an error or if it was. Okay. And then just, obviously, the second column, you know, remove that space in there. And then I just attached the information I would like on instead of what was on there regarding the tax information and payments.
Is there going to be enough room for all that?
Yeah.
And this was a two-page, two-page, you're gonna, you're gonna attach the villages?
The second one, uh, second page is actually just the language, the backside will be a one page, but two-sided.
Okay.
Uh, since we're kind of hamstrung, I know, uh, I afforded it on to the, the fire committee. I think you kind of looked at it. You can't really add any other language, so.
Yeah.
It's just literally the, the second side is the language of both villages. Because you can't say vote, you can't, other than this is. What it is, more or less, so.
We can only say what is going to be on the, on the ballot. And what we are, what, when Nathan and I worked on it, I mean, we did orig, I mean, have it big.
Yeah.
So, so I think it switched to a column. And, you know, the one that you did, I just thought we want it big instead of.
Yeah, I know, this, and this is still in rough draft form. I just wanted to do something on the agenda.
Okay.
Because our timelines.
Well, because I hadn't seen it, so that's why I wrote the notes I did. So.
Why is township and county all caps?
Because customers, you don't know how many times we get checks made out to Alpine County Treasurer, or they get them made out to the county. The county and the township, that's just to emphasize that you write your check out to Alpine Township through that timeframe and you make it out to Alpine County after March first.
I'm still concerned that we don't have enough room to get all that in there.
On the first iteration, maybe some of the, was the ability I was afforded by cutting some of that.
Well, and it, what was cut wasn't correct. I mean.
I, I, I looked at it and tried to streamline the information.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, but I mean, we don't need, there's a couple spaces in there. Um.
Is there any?
I could take my name out of there and, I mean.
What, you know, on the, on the village, is there, is there, could you put in there, I don't, I don't know if from a, from a road standpoint, but I know that from a fire department standpoint, we are likely to host some town hall meetings and some other things out there, whether it be to the Lions Club, Rotary Club, those sorts of organizations. Is there anything you could put in there that says a town hall meetings to be announced or something like that? Not necessarily to.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a generic as that, I think you could probably.
Maybe steering them to the website.
Come on, that's.
I mean, town hall meetings will be announced on the website.
Okay. Yeah, something, because I know that we've talked about it and, and although I suppose putting this out there is, is, is great. I want people to have more, a more rounded knowledge other than just a yes or a no. Uh, and so.
It's going to be beyond the scope of just a newsletter.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I say newsletter, uh, excuse me, uh, like town hall meetings or something to be announced, something to that effect.
Anything that's inferred, I think, that it would be promoting.
An action. Just in that.
Yeah.
Information.
Well, but you, but I'm assuming the township, town hall meetings may, and so I don't know if, I don't know where that line.
We want to be very careful about that because it has to be factual based and we can't lean one way or another and somebody asks us.
And I guess that, that would be something I, I defer to him as well.
Yeah.
If, when we start talking about town hall meetings, I do as board sponsored meetings, because then that could, how does that look? I mean, I, obviously, I get the, the gist is as informational as possible.
Yeah.
Uh, but how, can you do that as an entire board or should that be driven by the fire department in regards?
For the fire committee.
You could schedule a special meeting, you know, a special board member, you wouldn't have it.
Well, let me, let me tell you what we talked about and then you can maybe noodle on it a little bit. Uh, we talked about having, uh, not a, not as a full board, because we didn't think it was necessary. This was just sort of going to be maybe, maybe the fire committee talking to whoever shows up and, and giving them the factual information and answering questions. And obviously, if somebody said, how should I vote? Then we'd have to say something like, your conscience, or something benign. So, I wouldn't really, I, I wasn't thinking, and I don't think anybody on the, on the committee was thinking, that it would be a full board that would be talking about it.
Yeah, you'd be inviting the public to your committee meeting.
Yeah, no, this would be an open meeting, uh, on it, maybe on a, uh, maybe two or three of them, and it might be at six o'clock or might be at some, some. Or it might be here at just different times so that, so that we could get the biggest population base to gather information. And then they can conclude that decision, uh, however they, however they chose.
Yeah, I, I guess if in that guise, that, that's how I would see it, is that you just publicly announce fire committee meetings, uh, to openly discuss, uh.
Facts regarding.
Facts regarding.
Yeah.
I think that's.
When, when would this go out?
Uh, we had to have this submitted to, uh, the county by June tenth.
Who?
So, so that's a thing. I mean, I guess I looked at the fire committee because.
Yes, alright.
Really, the, the principal side is just a contact list.
Yeah.
The other side is just data points on the village.
Yep.
Isn't have any intrinsic value.
It says right there.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
August second. You can always put it in the media or something in the paper, on the radio.
Oh, we're going to have to.
Yeah, yeah.
But I guess, my question is to kind of bounce it off the, the fire committees, because obviously that timeline's ever pressing and we need to start the educational outreach aspects. Does, I mean, because you're limited with the content on the second side about villages, is, is this something that still has intrinsic value moving forward? I guess that's what I.
A no kiss?
Well.
Because.
I think there's other ways we can get it out there, I guess. Yeah, and I suppose this doesn't, this doesn't hurt. At all.
To me.
It's just, it's just more, more knowledge. And so like, like Cash said, we could just, uh, get the word out in, in, in many different fashions about town hall meetings or, or
Yeah.
get on speaking engagements or whatever the case may be, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's another reason I reiterated the website, because obviously when you only have X amount of space and you have ten times access volume, you want to drive them back to.
Right.
You know, our source.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Uh, well, we have a rough draft, if, if there's.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the zoning board, should that say zoning board of appeals? I mean, the website or the whatever it is, is ZBA, so I assume that means zoning board of appeals.
That is correct. Potentially one. Correction.
Are those two different things though, or not? Is the zoning board one thing and zoning board of appeals another thing?
Planning Commission used to be named. Intermingled as a.
Zoning board.
Zoning board, but is, is EBA separate? Separate.
So do we want it to be zoning board of appeals?
That would be the correction.
And are you tweaking this, Nathan, or?
Yeah, I actually, Haley fixed one of my, uh, mess ups.
You missed.
Because, yeah, because I'm very obstructorous, because sometimes it's just how.
Obstructionist or obstreperent?
I'm not an obstruction. So. That'd be another meeting.
So, I mean, if there is not enough room for that, I mean, I can try to reword it a little bit and try to remove a few words, but that's the content I need in there.
Which were in the face, the cover letter, you mean?
In just as far as the tax bill information, but I could probably reword.
Yeah, I mean, because the original one, I, is obviously reduced greatly.
Well.
It was, it's almost now. There's a lot of information. So I do, I just tried to take your, your key points of timelines. I'm saying with or without penalty, who it goes to, the, the principal contacts, because then I was able to space in.
Well, this was put in there, it was incorrect dates.
Yeah, obviously, I saw.
And penalty. Yeah, and penalty and interest are not charged, but whatever, but I mean, I'll shrink it down or whatever, but, or if you want to, I'll look at it before it's final.
I personally don't think a lot of people look at newsletters that come in with their bills. We get tons of newsletters every month and
for the money. My mail box.
The last month, we've been giving them to the supervisor and it's a stack and I think more than half of these are going to go right in the garbage.
I, I use a shredder.
Yeah. As long as, as long as you all recycle.
Well, and it's an inexpensive way. I mean, it's still going to cost money, but it's still a way to get some information.
The estimate on our own machine was to the tune of, what was that cost, six hundred dollars? Or something, I don't remember. Obviously, the other two.
My figures for the paper and the copies are going to be about two seventy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's cheaper than last year. Does, is that on the new one?
Just on the new copy.
Yeah, so that's even less than it was last year.
I guess I looked at the board. Is this something that the board's willing to move forward with?
Sure. I'm going to move forward.
Is, which department's going to pay for it?
Uh.
Board of trustees.
Does the board have a code? I don't think they have a GL copies.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think they do.
Can we, they have printing and publishing, but they don't have copies.
Well.
Are you going to move?
They have office supplies to cover the paper.
Word of trustees.
Yeah.
What do I have in mind?
Professor's copy. Yes, as long as you have the copy.
As long as I never make another copy, I'm going to. Uh, well, we have a motion on, on the table to move forward, uh, with the kind of the corrections, uh, as presented. Yes, Laura?
I'll support it, but can we revise the motion to, um, approve the content of the newsletter slash insert and to have it included with the summer tax bills? That's the wording they wanted.
Oh, yeah, they gave.
Are you friendly to that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we have a yes sir from the motion maker to the supporter. Is there a yes sir there too?
Yes.
Okay, that's, got to that. Any further discussion? Hopefully, no more yes sirs, but. Uh, seeing none, uh, role call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Well, moving forward to all business, uh, number two.
Um.
Which I would be like to.
Yeah. At the last meeting, we discussed what to do with the revenue, if any, is generated from ordinance number one fifty. I said that I would contact the auditors. Um, Chelsea did let me know that, yes, we would have a few revenue counts. We would have to add three GLs. One for state revenue, one for inspections and one for fees and permits. Um, then we would also, we could add a department similar to what we have for the building department to track any expenses associated with the marijuana. And then she has not seen anybody do like a new fund. We could just do this all under the general fund.
Well, we would have to create three new GLs, no matter what.
No matter what. We'd have three new revenue GLs and then we could do the expense GLs associated with them, so that we could keep track of.
Yeah, although I understand, I guess, what Norm was trying to accomplish, I seems to me we can accomplish the same thing as a board with the monies in a general fund, no matter what.
Our, our, our software inherently tracks.
Yeah.
Everything.
Right. We have BSN A to track everything, so I think we should just use our software to track it and not a special fund.
Well, that makes sense to me because that increases, I suppose, our banking fees, but it, but it, it just seems to me that, that as a board, we can determine the best use of that money.
As we see.
As we see fit.
I agree. But I just wanted to let you know, I did check that out and we, we're fine just putting in the general fund.
Okay. Uh, most, most needed to move forward with the old business, we move forward to new business, uh, number, uh, one was, um, uh, an ask of the chamber for, uh, a program that they've been doing for quite a while, um, to help support the Combat Redness Training Center. This is, uh, they're looking for sponsorships of three hundred dollars. And obviously, you see all the bullet points that go, uh, for this. Um, I have independently attended, uh, these functions in support of our military members. Um, and I think that it's, it's a valid thing to give consideration to for an expenditure. So, uh, I guess I'll leave it to the board of what your, your feelings are in regards to, uh, a potential expenditure of three hundred dollars to the chamber for the red, white and blue review.
If we were to do this, where would it, where would it come out? What, what GL would take that from?
Uh, the best would actually be, uh, the board, yeah. Uh, to me, you could look at it in a couple of different ways, um, because a lot of this cost goes into the printing, publishing and advertising. Um, I think that's a plausible, uh, unrealistic GL to utilize. Um, otherwise, it would be, uh, coming out of, and I believe that we pay actually, all the dues that we pay for Chamber Target backslash has their own defined GL. Uh, so without doing an amendment to transfer three hundred dollars to that GL for an expenditure. Uh, the straightforward one I would say is one oh one, one oh one, nine zero zero point zero zero zero, publishing and advertising.
I got one oh one dash nine.
One oh one, one oh one, dash nine.
So you're thinking dues would be, because I'm thinking it's like we'll have signage that are printing and publishing zones. Isn't that what you said is printing and publishing?
In every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, but then I thought you said dues.
No, I was, no, I seen the dues that we pay for existing, uh, dispersment and allocation for Chamber and Target has its own defined GL.
So what is the GL number?
Of that.
Of the printing.
Oh, one oh one, one oh one, nine hundred point zero zero zero.
Is that board of trustees or?
It's board of trustees.
Well, you know, it seems to me that the Combat Readiness Center is a pretty significant asset to, to this community. And that, the reason why we put as much money with, as we do towards the Chamber of Commerce is because we hope that it will generate revenue ultimately for us and support the community's growth, et cetera. And so, this to me makes makes sense to me. It's not, it's not a lot of money and it, and it gets a lot of, uh, gets a lot of people looking at it from lots of different places. So I would make a motion to approve the three hundred dollar expenditure for the, uh, red, white and blue review out of GL one zero one, one zero one, nine zero zero dot zero, zero, zero.
I'll support that.
Yeah, motion and support for their discussion.
I've been to. I've been to many of these. Oh, I'm sorry. Just there, it's a great event. It's a great date night per se. I mean, it's just a good community event.
I, I think, I think you're right. And I think it's something that I would pay a few bucks for my wife and I to go to. I'm not sure if it's the right use of taxpayer money, however, because it sounds more social than it is. You know, development. I mean, I, I very much support us or setting up a membership to the chamber because that goes very long with what you were saying. But I'm not sure this is the same thing. I mean, we all, I think, want to support our military in whatever way. But I don't know whether. Using our citizens' money to do it. Is. You know, selling 300 bucks, I realize that, but it just, should we be using taxpayer money for it? I don't know. I know that there's one free pass to the thing. Along with this and that almost actually makes me question more rather than see it as a, as a reason to do it. Because it does sound more like, like you say, a good date night, you know? There and you'd be seeing these pork, you know, so.
I'm, that's all I have. Valid conversation, but it's more than just that evening that, that the monies go and they use for. So I see it as I, I also should always share those concerns of proper allocation of tax derived monies. But when it comes to having an opportunity to, to give a little something back to our, to our veterans and our, our military members. I know I personally have already bought, purchased two independent tickets because. Because I grew up in a military home, so I, I support wherever I can. So I think we can all do that independently, but as a board, I think that especially with the advertising that we get. In that sole function would be. A good reason to, to do it on top of actually just supporting our community. Um, any further discussion?
Could we, if we decided to do this, could we just say we would just like to waive the free ticket, like not accept it?
Donated. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
Either way, it's fine. Cause one ticket isn't going to do.
No.
You know, does his body any good? It would probably be better to donate.
Darn it.
Unless we raffle it up.
Noah, any further discussion? Seeing none.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Well, moving forward to item number two, new business, equal supply quote for window washing and floors.
We do this every year, get the floors cleaned and polished and all the windows in this building inside and outside washed.
And actually, it's been how long on the floor?
It's been a couple of years. Before COVID, the last time they cleaned it, so.
So at this point in time, is there a motion or discussion to drive towards a motion of? The quote brought forward.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to move forward with the quote presented for windows and floors.
I'll support it.
It's been moved in second.
And I have a GL number four. One oh one, two six five, eight two seven zero 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 janitorial services.
Is this in the ballpark or you've spent in the past, we've spent?
Yeah, actually it is. I think it hasn't really gone up, but the, the cleaning supplies haven't. I think that's the biggest increases with the materials. But it's, it's not inestimable. I mean, you can, you can calculate it.
I, I just, I was wondering how long.
I know it takes him a whole weekend to do all the floors.
Yeah, and so he'll usually spread it out a day, comes in at night. That way it's okay to walk on.
He has to move everything to one side, then come back the next day.
And it's held up well.
And he does it on a weekend.
Yeah, so as an end business. So a motion and support on the floors and window. Any further discussion?
Did we ever get any other quotes from that like that or? Relatively thin market.
Relatively thin market. And we hadn't gotten, I think we've used, the only other time we had, somebody actually provided what was with carpet cleaning and that was. Hard floors are, are hard surfaces are a little bit different. Seeing no any other discussion.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, moving forward to new business number three.
Was requested back in April that we put this. Our insurance out for good, so we have. A proposal in front of us.
This is. This isn't a proposal.
No, it's a request for proposal that we would. Put out.
And this is based on our current coverages.
Yes, it was reviewed by supervisor Skibby, myself and Steve because to make sure that we only have. Yeah, and what's that? What's not attached? I did want to bring item number twelve, public official bonds. I don't know what page it is, I don't know. For some reason, we have the clerk at 200,000, which is costing us $532 extra. I don't think we need that much for the clerk, but you know, I'm the clerk.
No.
The other ones are all free except for the office clerk, which is for 5,000 is we're paying $30 for that. And I think that's office clerk would be Kelly as the billing clerk for one.
What, can I just say that? What do you mean it's free?
It's part of our package.
Oh, I see.
We don't pay any extra premium.
Okay.
The clerks has been increased to 200,000.
And why was that? Do we know?
I don't know. There must have been a request somewhere along the line. I think it came in from Carrie.
Oh, maybe because of the.
Something like that.
Because of the nine forty one payments that weren't being paid.
Do you think maybe that's part of it?
No, there's no, there's, from the, from the statutory standpoint, the state. Doesn't even require you, they, they, they require a clerk's bond. That's it, but they don't state what. Limit, so, but I do recall paying the, paying penalties. Yeah, there was a muscle or a mountain four and it was actually, we obtained it.
Yeah.
We, you mean, we met the limit? We collected it to reimburse losses from. Yeah.
So what coverage there, Steve, what would you recommend?
So, so. Really, yeah, that's just it. The, the clerk is not. The, the, there is no statutory expectation from the state, which amazes.
We do get 10,000 free.
Yeah, yeah. All of this with the exception of the clerk and the, and the office clerk. Are, are just provided within program. The only. The only difference from a state standpoint is that from a county standpoint, because of our friend. Down in Alcona County, the law changed, which required a treasurer's bond in the amount of a million dollars. To be, to be posted for counties, not, not township, not cities, not villages, just the county. And so there is no expectation of the state many, many years ago. The program just said, let's just throw that in. It was just arbitrary numbers.
Well, it seems to me if the treasurer's only at a $25,000 level, and this is personal bonds, right?
These are, these are what's, these are called position bonds. And so it doesn't protect the person per se.
No, it's not a cover, it's not insurance, it's a bond.
It's a bond, yeah, and so.
So they're liable for that plus anything.
Yeah, but for the fact that there's no, no signed indemnification agreement. So in other words, we don't even concern ourselves with that. And that was always the rub, that if, if somebody, if the county treasurer needed a million dollar bond. And they'd filed bankruptcy two or three times, they'll never get a million dollar bond because there's nobody to indemnify it. And so, at least.
So the individual in that position doesn't have to sign the bond.
No, it's a, it's a position bond, not a, not a person bond. So in a, in effect, nobody. In effect, it's a cost of doing business to the insurance company. There's no indemnification agreement. Like what you would otherwise expect.
So in other words, the insurance company though then is liable for that, that amount, that bond?
Yeah.
It would no, no.
No recourse. Yeah, isn't that nice?
For a change.
So, so, but, but Russ is exactly right. Bonds are not. Insurance. Bonds are protection against third party type losses. And so in this particular case, it's effectively a two party bond.
But the insurance company still. If, if there was. A, an embezzlement, a fraud, whatever. The insurance company still has subrogation to that individual, that, that person in the.
Well, under the, under the faithful performance aspect of it. Which is a different part of the bond, which is a different section. There. They, I don't know who they would subrogate against. Because there's no indemnification agreement. So if they went into a courtroom and said, well, we know that this person took the money, we want to pay it back. Then that, then they'd have to file some criminal.
Well, there'd be a criminal action and then I assume the insurance company would be standing behind that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
The drive.
So then would it be the recommendation of the clerk and, and trustee laughing to look at what is a reasonable number put into the clerks instead?
I think it's something at or less than 25,000.
Yeah, I would personally, I, I never quite understood why it was done completely the way it was back whenever. And I'm pretty sure it was Carrie that did it.
Probably was thinking.
It would seem more logical that the treasurer would have more of a. Potential for, for sticky fingers.
But at the time, it was the clerk prior to Carrie. That wasn't making these payments, so that position. Is probably why it got increased.
Could be.
Because it fell on her.
I'm sure it comes under the coverage of the bond by not.
It well.
I don't know.
Well, I will tell you, and this is where, this is where you have to be really, really careful. We pay those penalties, we proved it because we've done it. But like, when I say we, I guess I should say the power plan because I'm, as you all know, I'm out of this. But I know that we've paid those over the years. And some in much larger jurisdictions are bigger numbers. And so we pay the penalties and fees. The company doesn't pay the bill.
Doesn't pay the bill.
They pay the other. Most insurance policies will say no coverage. We don't do that. The power plant doesn't do that. Specific language in there that, that pays those penalties and fees. So just know that unless you're willing to hire somebody to. Fine tooth the entire insurance contract. Phrase apples to apples don't apply in my world.
So again. Get this train traveling.
You guys can come up with whatever number you feel is appropriate. There's no statutory network.
Okay, well, I mean, you make a good point because statutorily, there is no propensity for her dealing, the clerk to be dealing in cash. And typically that's where the highest liability would rest.
Right, okay, right.
So I mean, your experiences, what is the recommendation for a number so that we can get this RFP?
I, I just maybe make it the same as the treasurer's.
Is that now, what, do we know what that would have associated costs?
The rate is 28 cents.
Per thousand.
And the first 10,000 is free.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's somewhat negligible.
Yeah, so it's not that much.
So I mean, to match the.
I mean, it's even like the deputy treasurer's 15,000 and.
Are we good with that? Any other discussions of the RFP is presented? Uh, so with an RFP now, we actually are going to have to put it out, so. How do you suggest a motion? To move forward with the RFP presented and the.
And how do we want to advertise?
Yep, it's modified. Number 12, $25,000 for the clerk. So. At this point in time, and we also within the motion should discuss advertising. As well as, okay, so I'd entertain a motion to move forward with the amended RFP for section 12. To go out for publication.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and did we have a date that you were looking at for?
I have it in here by June 20th.
So we have a motion on the table to move forward with producing the RFP for potential bids. Is there support?
So where, how are we advertising it on the website?
Website.
And you think the Alpine News? For three days or?
To me, I think that you could probably negate it with the amount of potential companies that would even have the means to respond to an RFP by. Direct telephone call saying, please visit our website. There's an RFP for.
Are you making those calls Supervisor Skibby?
Oh, that's my support staff. I don't, I'm fine with whatever. Alpine the news, you want to do.
I, I think, I think direct mail to, I don't know if you have to make a phone call, just a direct mail to the agencies in, in the area.
And realistically, I know that there are a lot in your former life. But realistically, with this level of comprehensive coverage, how many realistic firms are within the area that could produce this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll be perfectly honest with you. Zero.
So. So I'll make those three phone calls. Sounds like my support staff could probably make those. I guess I looked at the board.
Must be why the. I mean, others that go out, out of the area for some, for bids at least or for coverage or something.
Yeah, it, it's.
Well, it's been a point of this board since we've been here to try to utilize local representatives in any facet since we started, so.
What if we contact the ones that submitted for the health insurance? Do they all offer the same or not?
Benefits only offers benefits, so they wouldn't offer this type of insurance at all. So the only other one would be Alpine Agency.
And Tupper Michigan doesn't do any of that, right?
Talking about a dozen calls, I can make a dozen calls and say, please. Yeah, I, I hope you also understand that I'm just, if it's that small of a board, I can make calls.
Yeah.
So why have the, the added expense of utilizing Alpine News to say, please go to alpinacomfort.com?
Yeah.
So we're going to approve it as amended, post on website and call.
I'll call any.
Local agents.
I'll ask our local professional agent who I should be directed towards and I'll make very pleasant. Driving them to our website. So we have a, a motion and.
We have not. I think I supported it, didn't I? Or maybe in my head I did.
It counts. Okay, so we have a motion and any further discussion? Seeing none.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of new business are budget amendments.
I guess I'll take that one too.
Yeah, I think you got the next string of throws, don't you?
Um, the data processing one, first one, we just needed to get more money in there. Um, North Point Shores, there's only one side to this one because last year they did not use all the funds allocated that we had collected in this, um, special assessment. Nathan and I, when we were doing the budget estimated that the amount left over would leave them forty-five thousand. We were short one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight twenty-two. That they had left over from the previous year that we need to roll over to this year. So we can keep track of how much is in North Point Shores. So that's why there's only one side to that budget.
Yeah, because it's kind of trust. I mean, that's trust money really.
Right. We're just.
We're just the fiduciary, the fiduciary of their, uh, special assessment district.
I'll make a motion to adjust the budget, uh, as, as presented.
So we have a motion and support to, uh, perform the budget adjustments as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing on roll call, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Just to crawl.
Yes.
Just to Reiner.
Yes.
Just to Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Uh, moving forward in the agenda, chief, you might as well get up to the podium. Uh, next three are, uh. Your items.
Good afternoon. Mark Cans Fire Chief. Sorry about my appearance. Guys are still out on a structured fire, but we have it contained. So they're just an overhaul worker at this point. I don't even have the agenda with me. I just come back quickly.
Well, they're five. We're at five.
This is the.
Yeah.
What was that?
Six hundred and twenty dollars for Omega.
Omega.
Okay, uh, that was an estimate that I had from Omega Electric for the electrical issues that we needed to, uh, touch base with after the ocean inspector was here, his recommendations of having that repaired. So I quickly went out and got an estimate for that, uh, uh, those fixes, if you will. And, uh, that was, uh, the, the only estimate that I received at this point. So, uh, and they have given me some estimates on some other things for egress lighting and different things like that. But this was an immediate, th- this is what the inspector said would be an immediate fix need. So that's what we, uh, did for six, six twenty.
It covers both stations.
Right.
Yep. So at this point in time, we have a recommendation from chief to move forward with the quote from Omega Electric for six hundred and twenty dollars to, uh, remove extension cords and charging cord reels at both fire stations, uh, to come out of two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, one, zero, zero, zero. Is there?
Motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
Been moved in, supported in further discussion.
Chief, it, it doesn't say it's for both locations.
At both fire.
I'm afraid of both. I looked for that too earlier and then.
My apologies. Usually I would print off everything to bring with me, but.
One. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
So, yes, Laura.
I just have a question like, why, why don't we have more than one quote? I'm just curious like. That, don't we typically try to get at least three quotes if it's over?
Yeah. We.
Yeah. So, so starting with the last.
I'm just asking.
The past year, we, even when we go out to quotes, sometimes there's only one that comes back because the other five companies don't even respond.
I understand that. I was just wondering, did we? Uh, can't take more than one person.
Uh, no, I did not.
Okay. That's, I was just, that was.
Ryan was good enough to come over here right away, get me a quote drummed up so I could get it to you folks. And, uh, I want to be able to send that back to the inspector as a product that's been completed.
Okay.
Uh, and I didn't think it seemed unreasonable from, from my standpoint.
Is this on a, do you know if it's on a separate circuit? It doesn't even have to.
So the way it is right now is that, uh, well, in this station, for example, there's an electric cord that goes up the side. It's wired tied to some outdoor, so from conduit, then it goes across the ceiling and it goes to electric reel. That's then brought down to charge the trucks with, you know, that.
Yeah.
And that's a no-no. Pardon me?
Real OSHA stuff.
Right. Yeah. So that, that was the first thing that he picked up on. So that was one of my first things. I want to make sure that we get taken care of. Uh, just to satisfy his inspection.
Is he coming back again?
No, I'm just supposed to send him, uh, what we, corrective action, what we've done. Uh, and I would think that the invoice would suffice for that.
So we have a motion and support on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call please.
Just to crawl.
Yes.
Just to Reiner.
Yes.
Just to Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next one is the MSA float test.
Okay, uh, we have self-contained breathing apparatuses. We have two different kinds. Actually, we have MSAs and we have Scotts. The last MSAs that we purchased were through, uh, Apollo Fire. They also do the service of float, uh, you know, CBA flow testing. Right now I'm trying to get that set up with the, uh, Hillman Fire Department because they have the same air packs. And we're going to try and split the mileage cost. So this might not be an accurate, uh, total, but the fire chief out in Hillman said, yes, let's do it on the same date. I just need to convey that back to Apollo Fire. I'm, I'm assuming we're going to save almost half in the mileage charges for having them come up. The FCBA's are very specific to each company. So it's not like you can go out and get ten quotes. A company either sells MSA, they sell Scott or they sell Drager. Uh, there's not, there's not. Right. And they also sold, sold us our last, uh, SCBA's of which they said that they would reprogram and update the programming in the software while they're here free of charge, uh, in our current packs. So my, my recommendation is that we go ahead with this, uh, uh, quote from Apollo Fire. Uh, I'm hoping it'll be less with the, with the mileage change. If I can team up the Hillman Fire Department. And I did budget for this item, uh, under contractual services. So I would recommend that we do that for no more than fourteen hundred and forty-six dollars.
We have a recommendation from chief to move forward with, uh, SCBA flow testing, uh, through Apollo. For, uh, uh, some not to exceed, uh, one thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars to be derived from GL two oh five, three, three, six, dash eight, zero, one, zero, zero, zero. Professional contractual services. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Support, uh, further discussion?
Well, you answered my question on, on whether or not, uh, because I, I saw that travel and like, jeez.
I know. Yeah. And the thing of it is, is there's nobody in this area that does that service. So everything comes from the Detroit area, if you will. And I tried to get those folks earlier this winter to get that service done. And of course, my discussion with the ocean inspector and the risk, uh, management officer there. He goes, yeah, I kind of hard to get anybody to drive north in the weather to do anything for you. And I said, yeah, so.
Well, you answered that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Just to Reiner.
Yes.
Just to Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Just to crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next is hose testing and ground ladder testing.
Okay, uh, in your packet, there will be a, uh, quote from Waterway. Of whom this township has, uh, done business in the past with hose testing. I had another company that I had, uh, tried to make contact with. They're not readily available, but they wouldn't even call me back. Uh, so I do have this quote. I know that's a lot of money. It's an NFPA requirement that we have it tested. And, uh, you know, we, what they do is they come in as a full service. They take everything off the trucks. We touch nothing. They do it all. So my plan is, is that we, this would be on every other year rotation. And every odd year, we would have our own staff at least, uh, test our rack hose and our truck hose that we currently have. Uh, you know, at least our main lines that we're using so we can make sure that our interior lines are safe. But it, you know, it's, it's supposed to be an NFRA, NFPA requirement yearly. Uh, but if you have in-house testing, uh, which I want it done by a certified tester because it hasn't been done in a long time. We did some testing ourselves here and we were managed to fail several hoses. Uh, they're getting up in age. So, uh, I would rather have a commercial company come in, certify them, uh, or not. Might be one of those things that we're going to have to look for some sort of a grant for more hose because it's not cheap.
How much hose can you buy with four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars?
Kind of what I was going to ask.
Because I, I think my, my vein is, as, as I've always been open with is, I, I look at that as if, if it's an operation that could potentially be done in-house. I know you and I discussed that going on, on, on every other year. But this year especially, um, I, I just, I always err. I mean, we're, we're talking about how tight we should be about three hundred dollars to support our veterans. And, and almost five thousand dollars for a potential that we can do in-house.
Uh huh. Uh, and I don't disagree with you. Uh, at this point, we have thirteen, roughly thirteen thousand foot of hose to do. That would take us probably weeks with, uh, paid-on-call staff coming in and helping us out. I, I don't know if that would be a good service of our time right at this point. Michelle?
I, I am also very concerned that. If we can do this in-house this year, especially this year, because we don't have mileage money. This four thousand five hundred and fifty could be spent to buy new hoses if some aren't usable. So if they're, if we pay somebody to do it and still need to buy hoses, where are we going to get this money from? And grants are a great option, but we don't know for sure we're going to get them.
Right.
And I do know that the guys do have time because they've had days where there are no runs where they could be the hose.
It's not a one-person job. I want you to understand that. It's a four, five-person job to do this, especially when you're dealing with the large diameter hoses. And it's also the suction hoses. We don't have the capabilities of doing that testing. Uh, so basically the only thing we would be able to do would be the inch and three-quarter hose, which is what we call ragline. We just don't have the, we don't have the setup nor the manpower to pull that type of testing off.
The other question, you, you said this is an NFPA.
Standard.
Standard.
Yep.
So NFPA is not an authoritative group. It's a, it's an association, right?
It's best practices.
Right. And, uh, and then my ocean inspection, they look for hose testing dates, uh, by certified instructors or certified testing companies. Uh, everything has to be numbered and, and accounted for in that, uh, particular testing. So we have nobody that's certified for doing that. So it's just the good graces of our guys doing it and they test it if the hose blows or, or slips the coupling and then we take it out of service. But there's no factual data that we would be able to put along with it like they would be able to do computer, computer data with that.
Since you've been with us, have you had any hose failures that, especially the bigger hose?
Uh, yes, we probably have right now stacked up in the back, uh, room, probably about four hundred and fifty foot of it right now.
That's not usable.
That's not usable.
Why are we keeping it then?
I'm keeping it there. So I know what needs to be replaced. I've been, I've been waiting. When they did their first round of testing on our hose lays and bumper hoses, that's what failed out of there. And we had a couple of wildland hoses that failed as well.
This might be a pretty good, a pretty good opportunity because while you were talking, I, I don't necessarily know what I'm looking for. But an inch and a quarter hose through a whole host of these places for fifty feet of it is like under three hundred bucks. So I wonder if, if we could spend forty-five hundred dollars testing it and if twenty-five hundred feet of it fail. We could have bought brand new stuff. And not have to work. I presume they come.
But you still have to have it tested, even if.
No matter what.
Yeah, it's a yearly requirement. It's not an option for us to do it.
Oh, really? For brand new stuff?
Right. Yeah.
Comes with the stamp, doesn't it?
Uh, yeah, but there's still a yearly testing. I mean, we would be good for one year probably buying forty-five hundred dollars of the hose. But the standard says that we're supposed to test all the hose.
Yeah. Buy a lot of hose for forty-five hundred dollars.
Not as much as you'd think.
Well, this is fifty bucks, fifty feet of it for two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Inch and three-quarter?
Inch and three-quarters.
Okay. Yeah.
Again, I don't know of what I'm speaking because it's not my world, but, uh, um, the internet of course never lies.
It's always factual.
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Do we know the last time that it was tested, what we have? There's no, nothing.
There's nothing.
Documentation.
Nothing that I can find, but there's a lot of those situations, a lot of things that I can't find.
Uh, well, I just wonder like, um, maybe these people that you got the quote from, if we've done business with them before, maybe they would have a record of when that was done last.
Yeah, I think.
And I'm just thinking too, maybe do we want to just put this on hold for like a month just to see? What are you shaking your head for?
Or even two weeks.
Well, I'm just thinking, just to see if we can get another quote, how much thirteen thousand feet of hose would cost to replace it? And the every other year thing, like if we paid whatever a company like this for one year, then the next year, it sounds like we wouldn't have the capability of doing everything that this company could do. And the opposite years, is that correct?
So, so no matter what you do, just remember that even if I buy, let's say we bought thirteen thousand foot of hose today and go up, that covers our problem. Next year, it's still going to be a testing thing.
But my concern, I'm sorry.
No, I was.
My concern is the money is so tight this fiscal year that even four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars is a lot of money with our budget.
I understand that.
We can buy new hose with that. When we have more money next year, do the testing.
Right.
I think we all understand that it does need to be tested, but can we bump it out a year?
I'm not disagreeing with you at all, uh, but I will tell you that in my budget that I budgeted for this amount, uh, under professional contractual services.
Do we also budget for emergencies? Because there's always emergencies.
Right. I mean. I don't have Chris the ball.
I'm just talking, just throwing out conversation. The other thing is, is, you know, with this amount of money, let's just say we didn't do this this year with this company, but we used our paid-in calls and our staff to do it. How much is that going to cost us? How many hours are they going to have into it? How much overtime?
They'll have a lot.
I'm just curious. Or what, what would that number be? I don't know.
An overtime issue because we don't have to write currently until the fiscal, well, actually the calendar year, we're operating under a letter of agreement that this allows first write or refusal. So paid-on call could be used to augment, uh, this task, uh, which would mitigate increased costs, but, but, and I, I see it on both sides. It's not a single person job. I get that. But at the same time, we also know that, I mean, we had, uh, one individual for ninety-six hours straight, forty-eight hours, wheels never turned. So we have downtime. We have opportunities. I don't know how to maximize that time. But that's, that's been my sticking point with the, the hose testing. It was the last time that this was a topic. It was because the weather was too cold. Um, I, I understand that they're a professional company. This is what they do. Um, I just, I'm, I, I'm always just hesitant there.
Right. I really don't like it any more than you folks having to take this out of my budget, but I, I just want to point out it is a requirement. Uh, so NFPA standard is something, if we have people going into.
Requirement from who?
Some National Fire Protection Association.
It's a best practice.
That's a requirement.
How do they impose that requirement?
What happens? Okay, let me, let me say it like this. You have an individual, a team that's going into a burning structure and that hose fails. And you can't show or provide where you've had testing, proper testing on that hose. You know who's going to be liable, right?
I can, I can definitely appreciate where you're coming from. It, it completely, I, I get it. I, I wonder however, what, what concerns me is if we haven't done this for a long period of time. And if we're going to spend forty-five hundred dollars to test thirteen thousand feet of hose and five thousand of the hose, what does it come in, like a hundred-foot lengths?
Hundred, fifty to a hundred-foot length.
Okay. So if, if thirty of them fail. We could, we could have bought an awful lot of brand new hose.
And, and that's a possibility. And I will point out that any.
But I mean, to continue my point. I presume that if the, if the inspector tags it as failed. And if we continue to use it because we have no other option, and if your scenario happens. Now we're really in a, in a tough place because now we have all this foreseeability. It seems to me that it would be better served to use that money to buy new stuff.
Well, and my, my. Well, and my, my question, yeah, sorry, Justin.
Go ahead.
No, mine was, I'll remember.
Yeah, I may not remember. But, uh, if I'm using your numbers approximately, if I'm right here, it looks like it's about a seventy. To replace thirteen thousand feet of, looks like it's about seventy thousand dollars.
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we replace all thirteen.
Oh, no. But what if, what if, what if inspection says?
That we have to.
Yeah.
I know. And which leads me to my, my point of what is an allowable, what, I wish, should we have a ceiling on the amount of linear feet? Because. Uh, fire ground operations, obviously, yeah. If, if you have one fire hose is not scrubbed up and put back on, you go to the rack. But are we setting ourselves up for failure having that many linear feet would be my question.
I guess I don't understand your question.
There's typically.
Why do we need that much?
Well, why do we even take that risk? I mean, what if it's your house and?
Oh, no, I know. I get it on both sides. I, I get it. Is that all of our linear feet I take it? That's all of the usable linear feet?
That is what is on our three current inches. That has nothing to do with the probably approximately twenty thousand feet of hoses in the back as a storage unit. Uh, now I did.
Want that tested?
No, uh, no, uh, cause we don't have that kind of money. But I will point out to you that I just learned something through this company here. I learned up any hose that's manufactured prior to nineteen eighty-nine. It can't even legally be on the trucks and we may have some of that hose that fits that category.
How do you know?
I was gonna say, how would you know?
There's, there's the way they can test on, look on the couplings. There's some, some sort of.
Serial number.
Yeah, I honestly don't.
Eighty-nine, scratch.
Yeah. All right, I.
A year.
You know, I don't know, there was, when we had the old ladder truck, that hose that's all back there, that's probably all pre-nineteen eighty-nine. That's why I'm not even asking to get a check. But however, if we do need, uh, a, a section of hose, then I would pull the tester out and I would say to the guys, test this. We need to replace that on the truck. Either it passes or it doesn't. But if it's pre-nineteen eighty-nine, it's gotta go. And, uh, when that company's up here, I'm gonna have them educate me, uh, as to what we need to look for. Cause I'm, I'm not a hose tester per se. We'll, we'll go through the motions of doing it. And there's a process. When you put it under pressure, it has to stay under pressure for ten minutes. Basically what they're un- under the pressure and they're looking to see if there's any slippage in the couplings that are on there. Cause that's a dangerous item, or if there's any pinholes or cuts or abrasions in the hose that could give. Uh, of which, if you have that as an interior attack line, you don't wanna take the chance that. You're gonna have individuals inside of a burning house and then we have a hose failure. Now, anything can happen and it has and it will. Uh, but if we can be preventative, uh, that's probably what we ought to look at. And it's, this isn't a luxury for the fire chief to come here and even ask you guys to spend this kind of money. But if you're asking me to keep track of your department and keep us on track of what we need to be legal, this is one of those things.
So the, the UL labels on here, four dollars per set. I take a set would be one that's a hundred feet long or fifty feet long or whatever the set is. So do they UL label it somehow?
There would probably be a stamp on, from the manufacturer with the original manufacturer stamp on it. There would probably be a UL, uh, code on that, on the new hose.
Four dollars per set.
But they would put new ULs on it once they test it. That's.
No, what they do is they number the hose, uh, and then they do, give us a computer printout of each hose. It's testing.
They're charting us four dollars per UL label.
So that'd be about five hundred and twenty bucks.
That, that's for ladder testing. That's, that has nothing to do with. Yeah, uh, the hose testing's completely different. Now, th- this is everything. Uh, all of our ground ladders that are required to be tested annually as well. Uh, it, it really stinks that this is something that has to come out of a budget for every fire department in the country yearly. Now, do I know that every fire department does this? I don't know what they do. Uh, I only have to, uh, make sure that I'm. Conveying the right information to this board as to what's required.
So, so chief, do you? Would it? Supervisor has a great question in that we test all thirteen thousand feet of this stuff. And the inspector says, uh, none of this passes. And we're in a tough place. I wonder if we move forward with this, if we shouldn't. Pick a, a number of lengths of hoses to be tested. Uh, e- even if they were somewhat random so that we would have an idea as to. The status of these hoses without impacting one hundred percent of our hopes.
Right. Well, I mean, I can't, what, there again, I don't have that crystal ball. Can't foresee that we would. Have thirteen thousand feet all go at the same time, right? Cause we did, we did, we did some testing on our cross-lays that are our initial attack lines. Uh, cause I told the guys I wanted those done at the very least from our abilities. But when you start looking at the large diameter hose and stuff, this company comes in, they pull it all out, they stack it all back on. Uh, cause it's very labor intensive and I know supervisor Skibby can understand that because I'm sure he's put six-inch hose up on the top of the truck before.
It's all the paid-in call we're good for, right?
Do they connect this like to a fire hydrant when they, I mean, what do they? How does the water get to it?
So they have a, a testing trailer that they come in?
Huh? You don't do that? Well, I don't.
I was just, I liked your hand.
Well, I just wondered.
The international side.
I, I'll try to answer that the most I can. They come in with their, either their big truck or trailer that has all the pump devices on it that gets it up to the proper pressure. You know, we supply the water to them. Uh, they just, they can, they don't need a lot of water for the testing. Uh, but they need that pressure to be in the lines. So it's a matter of charging all lines. We, we will have to have our, uh, tanker on standby to fill our engine and different things like that. So it, it'll be more involved than, you know, just. Them pulling in, well, here you go, take it. Uh, but that truck will be out of service. So what we have to do is we have, for now, we have to have our backup engine in place. So when they come in, when they test, I'll say engine one, cause that's gonna be stripped right down. Engine three needs to be able to move out the driveway. Vice versa, when, when engine three needs to be tested, every, the other two trucks need to be in, in service. So, uh, this is not something I like any better than you folks, but, uh, I mean, you can make the decision, whatever you want, but I, you know. If you ask me to, you know. Do what's in the best interest of the department as far as legality wise, this is it.
I, I just want you to understand that we have to pay. Buy hose for fifty to seventy thousand dollars to replace a lot of the hose. We'll probably shut the pressure. I mean, I temporarily, cause I don't know how we can do it.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm saying if we had to spend a whole bunch of money on hose over and above this forty-five thousand, forty-five, forty-five hundred, excuse me. I don't think we're budget.
I, I guess that would be a pessimistic statement at this point, cause we're assuming that we're gonna fail all this hose. I don't think that's gonna be the case. I think we're gonna get some straggling pieces that are gonna be failed. Uh, we already have had some. Uh, we're going to need to look at replacing them. We do have some spare hose, depending what size it is. Uh, that came off the ladder truck. Now, some of that's inch and a half that, and some of that's pre-nineteen eighty-nine. We might not even be able to use it. Uh, you know, I had ordered a, a couple lengths of hoses to replace the ones that I knew that were off our cross-lays, which are our initial attack lines. Uh, just like everything else, that's twelve to fourteen weeks to get it. Uh, so. It is a, it is a bad scenario, but it's a scenario that we're faced with. That I wanna make sure I bring before this board. If you give me direction not to test it, that's your direction. I mean, I have to do with what you say.
I don't think we've ever get direction not to test it, but.
Just when?
Yeah, and in-house testing is an option until if we, if we don't go with it.
Well, and the hard suction is definitely what you can't do.
Right, so.
So what is a, what, tell, give, give me a day in the light. What is it, what is it? If, if we fill up a hundred foot of hose and if it leaks, it fails or no?
Well, yeah, I mean, there could be, there could be factors or it could need new rubber gaskets. Okay, that's a simple thing.
Okay.
Uh.
At the coupling?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, if it's got a puncture hole on the side of it, it's spurt water up, that hose is an automatic fail.
Okay, that stuff is seen on TV?
Yeah. If you put the, the hose under load and then the couplings, you know, basically pull away from the hose, like they're stretching. The danger of that is, is that they will continue to stretch and shoot out of there under very responsive pressure, a hundred and fifty PSI. Uh, you got a, uh, aluminum or brass coupling.
I'm, I'm just trying to come up with some sort of an idea as to how we, um. How we could mitigate some of our costs, but not endanger our people.
I, I'm certainly open to suggestions.
So I, maybe here's a, here's a viable opportunity to, to, to bring some more information to, to make the best decision possible is. Uh, if, as you stated, this is the company that has done our hose testing before.
Yep.
Uh, have them send us all the results from that test. At least that way you would have it as, even though it'd be pot, potentially archaic.
Don't hold me to the date, but I think it's twenty seventeen was the last time.
But it would be nice to have some.
In that way, I mean, cause one, yeah, I don't think anybody's ears and it's not a legal matter. It's, it's, it's a recommendation from NFPA. To do it and I agree with it and the safety of firemen has always been first and foremost. Um, I'm just wondering if, if we had some, a different angle. Uh, and some more information at our subsequent meeting that we can make a better decision.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I understand you can't do hard suction ladders. You can't do it all. Uh, I, I get those, but.
Right.
And right now my he- my hesitancy is if we can chip away and actually know what's bad with our, our immediate hoses. With staff, at least on one vehicle at a time, we can actually probably take and potentially with the remainder. Cause I don't think that you would compile a lot of overtime if paid-on calls were utilized. Um, we could take and have that forty-five hundred dollars to potentially buy the hoses that you guys find that are insufficient. I don't, I'm just, I'm speaking openly. I'm, I'm open if there's a motion thrown so that we can move forward.
I, I, I'll make a motion that we table this to our subsequent meeting and do more research and, um. Contacting Waterway to find out when the last time they were tested and to look at other options.
So you wanna table the whole, the whole quote as far as the hose testing and the ground ladder testing?
Well, let me ask it before the, the motion is now, is there an advantage? Obviously they're gonna, what is their mobilization? Are they, they're coming out of Caldonia?
Yeah, so the advantage of having it done all at one time is not having that additional, uh, charge for mileage that they're gonna put onto that.
And where is that? Cause none of that.
Yeah, as far as I know, that they, they included that in the price for the travel. That's the way I understand it.
Could you clarify that? That could be part of the.
Sure.
Yeah, cause obviously if you're mobilizing from Grand Rapids area, you'd rather, once your mobilization costs are initiated, that's your, that's a large part of the principle.
I want everybody to realize it, but again, if I'm doing the math correctly, about two hundred and sixty dollars for.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't know, a double jacket, it doesn't quite give me the cost, which is kinda strange. But on here, they range from two hundred and sixty-five dollars for a hundred feet to four hundred and eight dollars. So I mean, it's kind of all over the place, but I just don't have enough knowledge of this. So I don't know what a wildland fire hose is any better than a.
Well, I think, I think then I came up with seventeen.
Wildness for a wild. I got that, that's a tricky one. I got that one covered. Chief, you wanna take the other?
Yeah, so just, just like, uh, Mr. Nap, just like this, I mean, hoses go from the Corvette to the Cadillac.
I'm sure.
Just like you can imagine.
I don't know if we have Pintos or if we have, uh, Rolls Royces.
I would say that we probably have a Malibu hose up.
I, I would agree.
If, if you can get that correlation. Uh, we have nothing extravagant here, just the basic necessities. I mean, it's not the cheapest stuff on the market by any means, but keep in mind, they purchased that hose when they purchased the truck. So they got a better buying discount on that as well. And that's the time to do it. When you, when you bring in a new piece of equipment, it usually has to have hose put on it. Cause there usually isn't a truck that's available to peel it off. Uh, so that's usually figured into the price of the truck somehow or another. Uh, as, as loose equipment. But, uh, you know, I'm certainly fine if you folks wanna table it. I'll see if I can get some more research done. My, my, my thought process is. I don't think we wanna wait on ladders. You got firemen on, you know, climbing the ladders if one fails. Uh, I mean, basically the same, my same feeling goes to the hose, but I, I see there's all, it's a, it's a controversial topic and it's an expensive topic. There's no doubt about that. But even if I have a ladder testing coming, company come up, we're gonna pay, uh, mileage to that. Cause there's no ladder testing companies in Northern Michigan. Everybody's in the Detroit area, Grand Rapids. So now, now I'm gonna be kinda paying miles two different times if we end up doing going, going with the testing after we table this. Or, you know, I'm certainly okay if we table this for, uh, a couple of weeks.
Just till the next meeting.
And, you know, I'm certainly okay if you wanna table this until after August second. That's up to you, but I'm certainly not okay if we get into the fall time of the year and then we're gonna expect staff to have to try and do this when it starts getting cold. Because that was the big con- complaint there is that this is usually done in July. Uh, and they usually have paid-on calls and different things like that, uh, to help out. So.
Well, we have a motion on the table.
So what is the exact motion? So, yeah, well, I kinda wrote out and I don't know how involved, because there's a lot more that could be added to it, but, um. I would like to table the quote from Waterway for the hose and ladder testing. Until the next meeting. And do more research on the hose testing. Find out if the mileage is included in this price. Um, contact the company and find out the last time the testing was done. See if the other company would reply back with another quote. And any other research that anybody else suggests?
I, I would like to see on that research or on that spreadsheet. I presume that they probably have some kind of a serial number or something attached to each one of those hoses. That they, that they tested so that we could see if we still have that hose.
What spreadsheet?
Well, whatever, whatever printout that they would send up to us. They must have something that details what they did.
Oh, from when it was done in years ago.
Okay, right. So I don't know if you guys can, there's a smattering and scattering of stuff that I can try to look at back there. There's nothing. If you will, very much organized from what happened before that I can find.
They might have that.
Now, he's saying.
They, they, they very.
Not you.
Yeah. Uh, I, I'm certainly understanding what you want.
Is Waterway the only one that does hose testing?
Uh, no, there's another company that I called that has, hasn't called me back. Uh, I only know the two of them. I got both these numbers or both these companies from our insurance risk manager. I called these companies, cause before I even knew that this company had come and done this before here for this, the department. Uh, Mr. Gombos had recommended that these are two different companies that he knew of that other departments had used. And I thought, okay, that's where I'm gonna start. Why try to reinvent the wheel? And, uh, these, uh, folks here are the ones that actually answered the phone, called me back, sent me a quote. And I guess, I don't know what else I can, uh, I, I can probably do some more research as far as, there're gonna be some places further away. Uh, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Part of the research is all it was.
I guess more than anything, I want it to be on the radar that this is something, this isn't a luxury item for, for the department either. Because as, as a chief, you're thinking, oh my God, there goes another five thousand, six thousand dollars out of my budget that I don't already have. So I understand the board's concern and the, and the point behind it. And I'll do my due diligence like supervisor Skibby's word reviews. Uh, I will try to find out more to, to report back to you at the next meeting.
So we have a motion. We support any further discussion? Saying none, uh, all those in favor of, uh, supporting the table signify by saying aye. Oppose the same.
There is no discussion on a motion to table. I'm sorry, I don't think there is discussion on a motion to table, actually.
Uh, with that being said, uh, is there a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion for the township board to enter into closed session for adjournment of my approach for the purpose of discussing pending tax tribunal litigation.
Uh, we have a motion on the table to go into. Uh, we have a motion on the table to go into closed session. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Povich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Scooby.
Yes. Uh, we're now officially at seven thirty. So we are now officially back in open session. Uh, is there a motion on the?
There is. I will make a motion to authorize the settlement of the Commercial Bank Michigan Tax Tribunal matter by Chemical Bank, excuse me, by uh, establishing the two thousand twenty-one tax year true cash value at eight hundred thousand dollars, the assessed value at four hundred thousand and the taxable value at four hundred thousand.
We have a motion on the table.
Support.
With support by the clerk. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Povich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Scooby.
Yes.
I'll also make another motion uh, to authorize the tax, the township assessor to settle Michigan Tax Tribunal small claims and full tribunal cases with the concurrence of the township supervisor.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support that.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, any further discussion?
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Povich, yes. Supervisor Scooby.
Yes. At this time of the agenda, I would entertain a motion to go back into closed session.
So moved.
Uh, we have a motion to go into closed session to uh, discuss ongoing uh, legal, a legal opinion, written legal opinion uh, and matters regarding the confidential settlement negotiations uh, at the city of Alpine.
I'll support that.
We have support on our motion on the table is, and did I make?
No, I.
Okay, you made the motion wonderful. Uh, we have motion and support on the table to go into closed session. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, will you roll call please?
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Povich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Scooby.
Yes. We're officially in open session. Uh, is the, is there a motion on the table?
I'd like to make, I'm, look, I would like to make a motion to amend the prior motion that the city of Alpena and the charter township of Alpena will each pay half the cost of the USF out of their own funds.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Or.
Been moved and supported by trustee Lappin. Further discussion?
It's a UFS.
FS.
UFS.
United something.
So, before, so that, we're amending it so that.
Okay.
Washington, so, okay.
Yes, I will agree to that.
Okay, everybody's friendly to then uh, recommend.
Should we, could we put in there what UFS is? Maybe put rate study?
United Financial Solutions is. I can't think of it. We can put it in after the fact.
Yeah.
We can. Uh, with that being said, barring no conversation, discussion, a roll call please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Povich, yes. Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Scooby.
Yes. This is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comments online, uh, please use the bottom S bar to raise your hand or send us a text so that we can address you appropriately. Seeing no online participation and nobody in person, uh, public comment will be closed for the discussion for the greater good of the board. Uh, I will add something I did for it to you. Uh, the first responder grant program last week, uh, we were awarded for Dishay of forty-two thousand dollars reimbursement grant for training activities. And on top of that, we were actually put into the executive memo from the governor uh, with our, a quote from uh, yours truly, uh, that made her statewide press release.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's awesome.
So we're getting.
Did you write that grant, Nathan, or did?
Yeah, I wrote that grant.
Congratulations.
I wrote that quote. Um, anyways, uh, you take it where you get it, but we're, we're moving forward there. So barring any other discussion for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The motion on the table to adjourn, is there support?
We also.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at eight seventeen, sorry.